Good evening and welcome to the March 24th Oshkosh Council. We call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mugrower.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Paschal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Mayor Palmary.
Here.
Present, seven.
Councilmember Crowsey will lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on our agenda tonight is a new ordinance 20-104. And that is for temporarily amending council rules pertaining to public comment and appearance at council, board, and commission meetings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus emergency. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adapting on the first reading. Clerk, do we have anyone registered or did we receive any comments?
No, no, no comments.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? All right, please take the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
And we'll take a motion and a second on the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Do any councilmembers have any concerns with the ordinance as it is? Councilmember Paschal.
Sorry. Just to bring the question up again because I asked the question at the last, at the special meeting that we had. And I think the question is for Ms. Lawrenson is in regards to when this would expire.
As the ordinance is written, it says that notwithstanding any provision contained within the code or the rules during the period of emergency in response to COVID-19 coronavirus. So if you remember last Wednesday, when we met, the council affirmed the declaration of emergency and the council will declare the end to the emergency. So it's within whatever that period is, but it's within the council's control.
Councilmember Allison Osby, just to let you know, our lights aren't.
Oh, they're not.
Because we're spread out, but I saw, yeah.
Gotcha. So I'm not sure if this would be for city manager rollover or if it would be for Attorney Lawrenson, but when it comes to the boards and commission meetings, you know, is that something that strictly staff will be making the determination on or will they be seeking input from council members that are the liaisons for that board and commission as well as reasonably necessary for continuity of services? When it comes to that, will there be, you know, is that services strictly pertaining to the emergency or for current normal services under normal circumstances?
This will all be about continuity of service. In addition to the ordinance that was prepared by the city attorney, I provided the council with a memo. It was the Saturday that we opened up the Emergency Operations Center. And out of courtesy for the council, as well as, I think, I believe I said something about the democratic process, any board or commissioner can make a request to add an item or, essentially adding one item essentially creates an agenda. And I said I would not reasonably, I would not reasonably deny that request. And we're working on a few, you know, I think, Plan Commission. While we're not going to have one on April 7th, we will have one on April 21 just because we have volume that we need to, need to address.
Okay.
Great.
And if I could just follow up on that, Mr. Rollop. So then to clarify, then according to this ordinance, you would make that determination as to whether that item went on the agenda, council is not weighing in on that?
As always, I'm going to take input from council, but I will advise you about whether I think it's needed for continuity of services. We have 50 items on the agenda tonight, so as you can see, I was pretty generous with the departments that wanted to get some things going. And in a couple cases, they impressed upon me the need to have it, and I'm going to extend the same courtesy to the council.
Okay. Then I guess I would just like to clarify, there's a part of this ordinance that references written comments, maybe sent via mail, addressed to the city manager, placed in the City Hall drop box, or sent by email prior to the council meeting. Since we are not having public comment, you are still able to send your emails and make your calls to your council members even though it doesn't specify that here. This is in addition related to written comments and in-person comments. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's also instructions for viewing the public meetings via oshkoshmedia.org, live on W O C T radio station 101.9 FM, live through Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire Stick. There are special accommodations for those who may need them. You may call City Hall at 236-5002. All right, with that said, then, do we have any further discussion on the ordinance? All right, please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
Next, we have three public hearings. And the first one is 20-105. I'll read these three times. Approve and authorize submittal of City of Oshkosh CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant, 20-20-2024 Consolidated Plan. Clerk, do we receive any written comments or anything of that nature? Do we have anyone registered to speak on either any of these three?
No comments, no registration.
Okay, thank you. Notice the gentleman in the back of the room, I didn't want to leave him out. All right, so second reading, 20-105, approve and authorize submittal of City of Oshkosh CDBG 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan. And the third and final reading, 20-105, approve and authorize submittal of City of Oshkosh CDBG 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan. So we need to call the roll. No, we need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Davis. Just one question on this, and that is about the public participation piece for this and the following, just to clarify for folks how they might still add public comments.
Yes, you can still supply public comment to the Community Development Department. Our grants coordinator, Darlene Brandt, is gathering that information and will include that in the submittal to Housing and Urban Development as part of this submittal that's required.
What's the deadline for people to give their comments?
I believe that's going to be just prior to April 13th, so the week of April 13th, off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, back to council for discussion. Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
The second public hearing is 20-106, approve submittal of 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. And we have no comments on that as well.
Correct.
All right, council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the action plan? Councilmember Paschal.
Yeah, though it's not necessarily that specific, I'm going to vote present because typically my agency that I work for, the Housing Authority, is a recipient of such dollars.
All vote yes, Bob, we all are.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Present.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, six, one present.
I don't think, I read that three times. My apologies.
Go right ahead.
Read you? All right, 20-106, approve submittal of 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Third reading, approve submittal of 2020 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. So do we need to re-vote or no?
No.
No, we're good? Okay. And the third and final public hearing tonight is Resolution 20-107, approve the 2020 Citizens' Participation Plan as an element under the Community Development Block Grant Program. And again, we do not have anyone registered for that, correct?
No one is registered.
Okay. And the second reading, 20-107, approve the 2020 Citizens' Participation Plan as an element under the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the third and final reading, 20-107, approve the 2020 Citizens' Participation Plan as an element under the Community Development Block Grant Program. Back to council for votes, please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
Hasn't been brought to the floor yet.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
We had, so it was Mugrower and Paschal.
Correct.
Okay, good.
You got plenty, Mayor.
Please call the roll. Everybody's here.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
Oh, actually, there is a fourth public hearing. Resolution 20-108, accept and approve 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice as an Element of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And no one's registered for this item either? All right, second reading, accept and approve 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice as an Element of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Third and final reading, 20-108, accept and approve 2020 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice as an Element of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Back to council for motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis, we approved five, basically five things connected to our CDBG program. Can you just kind of give a little highlights and synopsis of the program, where we're headed for 2020?
Yes, Community Development Block Grant Program is federal funds that the city qualifies for. And just to plug, filling out the census helps because the more people we have, the better funding we get. And that funding is used for multiple objectives, federal and state and local objectives for affordable housing, low and moderate income household help. So we do work with a lot of partners like the Housing Authority to provide those types of services, and we have it basically broken down into multiple categories. One is owner occupied rehabilitation of housing. That's where we spend most of our money. We also eliminate blight by acquiring and demolishing blighted properties. We also work with public service agencies in providing services to low and moderate income households. We also can, we contract with fair housing monitoring through a contract, and we pay some administrative fees out of that for the people in the section that work on these block grant funds. So it's mostly housing related, but there's a few other offshoots that actually benefit low and moderate income households. These all will qualify for affordable housing type of projects. And as time goes by, we hope to do more and more of these projects. And fortunately, it's crept up a little bit in the last few years, so we have a little more money to spend on housing rehabilitation.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, I just wanted to follow up with a question regarding the potential for this to be amended or modified later should things change in this fluid environment?
Yes. It can be changed, however HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Agency, has said you still have to follow the regular 90 to 120 days to go through that process. So it's not a real fast amendment process, but it is possible to do.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Paschal.
For whatever reason, I must have an abridged, do we all have an abridged version of this document in our?
In your packets.
In our packets, yes.
What are we seeing?
But we received it.
The entire document as a link earlier?
So my question actually relates to the public involvement in regards to public comment and stuff like that. Is that, are those public comments available to us to observe and read? That was, that your office had taken in?
Yes, we've done surveys through Polco and Survey Monkey. We've attended multiple meetings to gather that information. I don't have it with me right here, but I could certainly forward that to you.
Sure. And that's not part of the document, correct?
The comments, I think, the comments would go to as part of the appendices.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, please take the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
All right, next we have quite a lengthy consent agenda for tonight, but let's see here, do we have any comments that were sent ahead or registration on speaking on any of the items?
I did not receive anything.
Okay, thank you. Back to council for motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure I'm going to stir up a little bit of a hornet's nest here with staff. I'd like to pull everything off the consent agenda that has anything to do with spending on behalf of the city tonight and discuss them one by one. I don't, I just don't feel comfortable spending this kind of money right now, given our current circumstances. So I would ask that anything that has anything to do with spending on the city's behalf be pulled from the consent agenda.
They have to be item by item, numbers.
Yeah, we'll need to pull the numbers, yeah. So that would be Resolution 20-111.
12.
20-112 and 13.
14.
14.
15.
15, 16, 17 is a credit. So do you still want that?
That's fine.
Okay, we'll skip 17. 18 is also a credit. Then we are at 20-120. 20-121, 22, 122, 123, 125.
Oh, that's a land sale, I think. Aren't we selling land there?
Oh, that's a sale, that's right, yep. 128 through 129, 130.
I think that's it, Mayor.
And I think the rest are special events, yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
20-112 is not an expenditure.
All right, so keep 20-112, but I believe Deputy Mayor Herman, yes.
Yes, I want to pull Resolution 20-112 for separate consideration.
All right. Do we have a second on the removal of these?
Don't need it.
We don't need it?
Nope.
All right. So we are removing those items. Back to council for consent minus those enumerated. A motion and a second for consent minus those items pulled.
Don't need that either, we've already got one on the table.
Let's take the roll.
Nope. Comment on everything else if you want to.
Wouldn't we go ahead and pass what we left?
I have a comment on the balance.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Councilmember Mugrower, my apologies.
No, not.
And that's my, that's my fault for making this so large.
And we're working through the telecommunications, the communication stuff with.
We have no buttons tonight.
And actually, mine just really revolves around the special events, and I always try to never speak for everyone up here, but it sure is my hope, and I think it's probably everybody's hope up here, that all the special events that were passed in tonight get to go off without a hitch, and that those events can do good work for the city. I know some of them are coming up, and hopefully, hopefully they're able to go forward, but I just wanted to give them a good word that appreciate their, they're still moving forward their plans, and obviously, we all hope that they get to do those things, so.
I'm glad you bring that up, actually. Oh, Councilmember Allison Osby.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask the question now or when we get to that, but at the last council meeting, I had mentioned that I think it would be a good idea if, when, if we accepted additional special event applications, that we did have something extra to go with it, that did say that we do have the right to cancel them in the event that this continues to move forward. Was that provided with the special events applications that we've received from that meeting to this one?
Mr. Rollop.
Every applicant's been advised that all of these special events are subject to cancellation because of the state order, and even prior to the state order, we were giving them the same advice that there was no guarantee that we still, and we technically always reserve that right to pull events.
Correct.
But we gave a little extra notice to that, and everybody's very fully aware of that and understands it.
And I'll just read the language that's in the resolution. Each of the resolutions have added language that City Attorney Lawrenson added. Approval of this event shall not be interpreted to supersede any emergency order or declaration applicable to such event, and all events shall remain subject to all applicable ordinances, orders, declarations, and requirements for public gatherings. So that was added.
Mayor, if I could, yeah. As it relates to the governor's special order that was just delivered, if the order's still in effect at the time that these events take place, they would not be able to take place because of the governor's order, so they would automatically cancel out themselves.
Yes, and that was one of my questions for City Attorney was whether or not we're passing something and sending a mixed message, but apparently that communication is two-way on either ends of all of these special events, and I trust staff did a thorough job. All right? Deputy Mayor.
Before we go forward with the, could the deputy, or could Deputy Court just go over what resolutions are pulled? Please.
I have 20-11, 20-112, 20-113, 20-114, 20-115, 20-116, 20-120, 20-121, 20-122, 20-123, 20-127, 20-128, 20-129, and 20-130.
Thank you very much.
I believe city manager was indicating that 112 was not a spending.
Correct, but I pulled.
But you pulled it separately, and I just wanted to make that distinction. All right. All right, so we are now ready to vote on the balance of consent. Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Paschal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried, seven.
I think we should first go to Deputy Mayor's 112 and then the other grouping.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 20-112 deals with approving the initial resolution for special assessments. I believe under current circumstances that if we do go forward with any street improvement programs, any projects moving forward that would require assessments, I would like to make a proposal to suspend the assessments for basically one year. I had a conversation with the city manager and with the finance director, Mr. Van Gompo, and if he wants to come forward, he may. To just where we can go with special assessments for 2020, I understand due to budgetary situations, we cannot go backwards, but we can go forward and make a decision as a council to how we want to deal with special assessments for the upcoming 2020 street program. And the reason I bring this forward is we just have so many citizens currently out of work, so many citizens that some of these secondary jobs such as restaurants and wait staff and all these other positions are positions that really supplement sometimes the incomes of these families. And with that income lost, it would be a financial strain to our citizens to make, pay these assessments, whether they pay it in full or they take the five-year, I think it's five-year, 10-year, 15 if I'm not mistaken. So either way, even if they took the 15-year, depending on, we all know from previous discussions that some of these assessments are $20,000. And at this time, with everything that's going on nationwide, statewide, and even local, I think we as a council ought to our citizens to do whatever we can to reduce some financial burden onto each and every one of our homeowners, property owners, apartment owners, et cetera. So I don't know who would I speak first, if it's Mr. Robbie referenced some of this?
I think I'll start, and maybe the city manager or the finance director can jump in here. I think the best impact would be starting with the 2019, because those bills will be getting prepared this year. Projects that are being constructed in 2020, those bills would not be prepared until next year after the projects are completed. So the 2019 project invoices have not been completed and prepared yet. So I think, you know, some direction there might be to maybe defer certifying those 2019 projects rather than, you know, starting right now with the 2020 projects, and then, you know, the council in the future could make a determination to look at the 2020 projects as we get closer to certifying and being ready to invoice those projects. Because each year CIP gets invoiced the following year.
Correct.
So the invoices going out this year will be for last year's construction projects.
Okay.
Russ or Mark?
Well, you read my mind, because that's what I was thinking about, was those who are paying this year for last year's projects.
Right, we would need to get council to amend their policy. You may recall a couple of years ago, I would say Steve and Deb would remember, that we wanted to make sure that those bills got out within 24 months, and so Public Works has been very diligent about getting them out the following year after the project closes, and that's why some of those change orders just approved with the negative change orders, those are to close the books on those so that James and his staff can get that stuff done. But the idea would be that we would proceed with this, I would recommend you proceed with this initial resolution even if you want to do that. I don't think what Mr. Herman's proposing and what staff's recommending are in conflict with one another, but I think this was, I think this was the best place to at least just get the discussion started. Russ, I don't know if you have anything?
Not a whole lot to add. I did take a look at it. You know, at this point in time, we are actually financing our special assessments, so we're doing okay from a cash flow perspective. I think with both the 2019 and the 2020 projects, it would be prudent to hold off getting those certified and starting that collection process, and I think we'll be okay.
So you're recommending both?
Yes.
So do we need to make some type of a resolution to advise staff that we're not going to be sending out bills and we would be notifying those property, because they've already had the public hearings, they've had all the meetings, they've been kind of told what their assessments would be? So we would have to go back and notify all those property owners in 19 and 20, correct?
Normally, we would send them their final bill in August, James, would that be it?
Yeah, we're. staff have currently been working on trying to finalize and certify assessments. So usually through the course of the season, our cutoff is usually around August so that, you know, the clerk's office has time to get things sent out. And then for ones that don't get paid, the Finance Department has time to roll them over to taxes. So August has kind of been the cutoff for us to certify projects for that year. So I think, you know, if this is where we want to go to, as City Manager indicated, we would need to do a future resolution to temporarily amend that special assessment policy.
Okay.
And I think that would be something that could be brought forward at a future meeting.
Councilmember McGraw.
Mr. Herman, did you still want to keep going?
No.
Okay. So I think it sounds like it'd be prudent to move forward with 112 tonight. But then later this evening, under Councilmember Direction to City Manager to have that discussion on bringing forth a resolution so we can discuss at the next meeting then. That seems to be what would be the most appropriate chain of events.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
So I agree with Councilmember Herman. My only concern is if a resolution is brought forward, you know, are we going to be looking at a minimum timeframe that this is going on for before that would be enacted? Or would it be better to have those that maybe are impacted for a certain amount of period of time, like those that are in the service industry may qualify? Because on average, that's a pretty significant amount of money that needs to come in. So what I don't want to do is because it's not unusual to have interruptions within the economy for a short period of time. So I also don't want to create any issues that may or may not be there because we don't know.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm kind of looking at it from the standpoint of we, you know, we probably should have this discussion further down. But there will be those families who will be absorbing those other individuals in their families who have lost, you know, perhaps. So, yes, Mr. Van Gompo.
As Finance Director, it would be my recommendation because of the severity of the COVID-19 virus to the economy, that it'd be a one-year thing. Obviously, if it gets more than one year, it'll have a larger impact on the city financially. So when it comes forward, my recommendation would be a one-year delay.
And Mayor, I would just say that, you know, Deputy Mayor Herman brought this to our attention. He mentioned it to me yesterday and brought it and discussed with Mr. Van Gompo today. So we're still absorbing it. On the surface, we were very receptive. But we also want to make sure that we're covering all our bases and make sure we come to you with a recommendation that's solid. The impact on cash flow, because when the fund was in rough shape, Counselor Allison Osby was on the Long Range Finance Committee, was well aware of the impact it had. And it will have an impact. And that will give us some time to look at it and come back to you. And this is what it'll mean. So you have a, you can absorb that. And, you know, if there's anything else you want to do in terms of, do you do a means testing and things like that? We want to make sure that when you make the decision, because I'm feeling that there's a good receptivity to this idea. But we want to make sure that we're being thorough in our analysis so that you're comfortable with whatever decision you make.
Yes.
And just to make clear, I'm not against the idea. But we've been in somewhat of a shutdown mode for a week. That's much different if we're in shutdown mode for 90, 120, 180 days because that's valid. But if we're in shutdown mode to say Easter, I mean, I don't know that that's reason enough to hold up a whole year of every single property just because I remember the days of cash flow issues pertaining to special assessments.
Okay, just to clarify then, are you referring to 112 by itself or the conversation we're going to have at the end of the meeting for the larger issue?
Yes.
Okay. So are we ready or do we have more discussion on 112? All right. Well, let's take the roll on 112. So if we vote no, then we will have an amendment offered by Deputy Mayor Herman?
Hmm, no.
To suspend?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember McGraw.
If I could ask the City Attorney, the consequences of voting no to this initial resolution are?
You would not be moving forward with the process to levy any assessments.
And the way it works with us voting no on things?
Someone in, you could bring it back later, but it would have to be someone in the majority who would bring it back.
This has the full effect of denying the full process if you vote no to it.
This is just the
You either move to lay it over and talk about it next meeting or take on the full consequences of the full special assessment process not happening for all of that.
I guess I would be comfortable with laying it over. I mean.
Do we have a motion for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
City Manager.
The reason we're recommending we're doing this, we had actually a scheduled hearing tonight for special assessments for one of our projects. I did not think it was appropriate to have that on the agenda. So Mr. Robbie notified the residents that we were not having the hearing. So we'll renotice them. This just gets us to go in on the process. We're not going to schedule the hearings until we're in a position that we want to do it, where we can have, give the public the ability to show up and have their concerns. We've been real successful in recent years of having a pre-meeting. And that's actually calmed down the public hearing itself. But Mr. Gode typically meets with the residents before the meeting and gets a lot of questions that normally come to council. And then council looks at the staff. We get those out of the way. My recommendation is proceed with the initial resolution. And we know that we need to wait. But that just gets us going. And then when we know we're ready to go, then we're gonna, then we would bring the hearing back, the one we just canceled tonight, as well as this one. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any further questions or discussion on 20-112? All right, please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McGraw.
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. All right, next we go on to those items enumerated previously on spending. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, wait. Do we need a motion and a second on those removed items?
You do them each individually.
Each individually, okay. So 20-111, motion and a second on 20-111.
Don't move.
Discussion. Councilmember Miller.
I just, Mark, you want to, you want to, you want to fight for these one by one? Or how do you want to do this?
I guess what I'd suggest is, you know, lay out your general concern because I think it's not, it's not specific to any one project that you're concerned. Because you had only mentioned a couple of them. This was not one of them that you mentioned. So I think generally, if you want to talk about your concerns and then, you know, the council can talk about that as well as a specific item here.
If we're going to do one by one, I just, I don't see the need to spend money on landscape design whatsoever. If it's just a 111 or any of this stuff where we're not contractually or legally obligated to follow through on any of this stuff, so.
I had some similar concerns, generally speaking. My thinking was to ask council if we wanted to consider like a 30-day pause on non-emergency, non-essential spending. I know that is somewhat of a delay, but I have some concerns also.
Councilmember McGraw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get to my thoughts on that, let me ask City Manager Roloff or Legal. There's a few contracts in here. Offering the acquisition of property. Largest one is nearly $12 million worth of road construction projects that have been properly bid out and properly handled by the Public Works Department. In cases like those where we have a process we've already gone through, what are the ramifications that you would anticipate from us either voting no or delaying any of those that are contractually obligated? Because there are a few contractual ones that are in there.
Yeah, we're under no contractual obligation with at least the amendment here as well as the public works projects at this time. The practical side of it is that to delay action would be there's a certain amount of time that the bids are valid. And after that, then we have to rebid. So we'd have to go through the cost of rebidding.
I would be okay with going through the process, rebidding.
Once we go through the process, then the bids, the previous bids are invalid. The number can go up or down. Now, there is some school of thought. And there is some school of thought, maybe we get more competitive bids later on. But at the same time, maybe we won't. Because if we create a pent-up demand for these public works projects, as Counselor Allison Osby pointed out, if it's a short duration, that's going to be much different than a longer duration. I will say to you, especially when it comes to street projects, the 1930s, we are still feeling the impacts of delaying an entire decade because we didn't get projects done. I don't want to be doomsday-ish about it. But delaying a year's worth of capital projects for particular streets, I can, I can understand something about a landscape design. I, it's going to be hard for me to argue that. Mr. Larson isn't here to defend it. But that's a lot different than a street project. A street project, to delay an entire season of street projects is going to take us and move us back. And I think our public is expecting. It is our number one priority in terms of doing streets. I'd respectfully disagree with delaying it. I would, I would get it done now, give them the whole season, perhaps even. I think there was some discussion with Mr. Robbie about, you know, figuring out ways to help make it less expensive for us to do it. And, you know, we can certainly have discussions with
So you're making a distinction between street projects and everything else, right?
Street projects, I, yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember McGraw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a very similar sentiment. I get, and I appreciate where Councilmember Miller's coming from in terms of, you know, some of the things not appearing as to be vital and necessarily important in the condition that we're in at the moment. But government has to continue. Government has to keep moving on. And that is our essential function, is to make sure that we keep moving forward. Especially when it comes to the road projects. I'm not interested in delaying those at all. I can get the sentiment behind the rest of them. But I will still support moving forward on every, on every purchase because we need to continue to move forward. These were properly budgeted for. And these projects aren't going anywhere. So on that note, I'll turn it back. But I got to say, delaying these is not something that I'd be in favor for.
Looks like Angela's handing us some other items.
I've got a handle coming around that way. You know, as City Manager Roloff alluded to, you know, the condition of our streets has long been a topic of consternation in the city. This is just a quick analysis of our street condition rating over the last 10 years. And across the board, all of our streets on an average have dropped almost 7%. Arterials over 10%, collectors over 7%. So even with the work we've been doing, the condition of our streets continues to deteriorate. And if we were to further delay these projects, that would only accelerate the continued deterioration of our street conditions as well as delaying some other vital projects. In particular, the Oregon Street Project, the sanitary sewer interceptor is being done not only to serve future development on the south side, but also to minimize the impacts of basement backups and sanitary sewer overflows in the southeast part of the city. Delaying that project would cause us legal implications with the EPA and the DNR if backups were to continue to occur because of delaying that project further, so.
Thank you, Mr. Robbie. I think we're still on 111. We were going through each item individually. But thank you, Mr. Councilmember McGraw. And Mr. Robbie and City Manager, I believe we're going to, as the City Attorney recommended, stay with one item at a time.
Madam Mayor.
City Manager.
I had a chance to pull up. I'm a little off tonight with everything being where we are and everything. If I would draw your attention to page 75 of our agenda packet. It's the memo from Mr. Larson. The landscape design is really related to the foundation work that is being done at the museum. That changes my view that it's on there for a reason. We are experiencing significant flooding in the basement of the museum. And prior to doing any other work, we wanted to get that landscape work done. It's associated with, as you can see, and I'll just let the memo speak for itself. But it's getting this design done until we got to get final foundation repair work. And we need to get that done before we can get the foundation project completed. And that's, that's really what this is about. And, you know, when we have storms, especially with spring coming, these are when we have a great deal of flooding, water seepage. And we found some problems with the foundation. So the landscape part of it is just to help restore it once we get the foundation work done.
Yes, I understand it. The memo also references part of that $13,495 includes needed travel. So is it possible or likely that if that travel is not done or able to be done, is that going to fall under essential services then since it's related to flooding? Even though it's landscape, it's not just pretty landscape. We're talking about functional landscape for the flooding purposes. Is that what I understand?
I'm sure that that has to do with the project people from Engberg Anderson or Saki Landscape to come up here and do any onsite work. I can't see that. I'm not sure what page you're on, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm in the memo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the 75 or 76, 75.
Okay. Yeah, if there's any travel, it's associated with them coming up to do any, any site work that's necessary. And that's expected as part of their duties. To the degree they need to do design work, they'll be doing design work in their office. They won't be engaging us there. But they would, when you're working on a physical structure, you're going to be, your eyes are going to be onsite.
So, Mark, so I want to just be clear. So this, this is to get the project moving. This isn't landscaping after we've done the repairs and down the road and things like that. I want to be crystal clear about this. So this is necessary to move forward with the foundation fix before the construction begins?
This is all part of the, this is all part of the foundation repair project. We don't need to do this for aesthetic purposes. And it's just, it's called landscape design because that's who, we're hiring a landscape architect to do that work. But they have to, they're doing the landscape side of whatever is asked to get done. We have to make sure drainage works properly. And structural people do the concrete work. They'll make sure that, Ken Saki will make sure that the drainage works and things like that. You know, drains away from the building and things like that.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Sure, and just looking at more of the detail of the memo, the travel that's included equates to $270.40. And it looks to be, obviously, probably 80% of that being mileage from Madison to Oshkosh.
Thanks for that. Anybody else have any discussion on 111? All right, please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McGraw.
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried six-one. Next is 20-113. Board bid of public works contracts, 20-5 to PTS contractors. This is on the Oregon Street Reconstruction. Motion and a second for discussion of 113.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Miller.
James, can you? Yes.
So obviously, given the world that we're in, and please don't take this personally that I'm beating up your projects here. It's the spending aspect of it I just, I just can't agree with right now. So what, what happens if we delay this for 30 days?
If this were delayed for 30 days, I believe that would put us outside of the bid validity date, which would mean we would have to go through a rebidding. date, which would mean we would have to go through a rebidding process, which would delay it another four to six weeks, which would then mean if the project were to attempt to get completed by losing two months of the project, I would expect costs to go up significantly.
When, when is the start date for this project?
Contractor would be itching to get going as soon as they can. We don't have, we're working on scheduling pre-construction conference. Once, you know, we get through with things tonight, then staff will continue to move forward with getting that scheduled.
Mr. Robby, what is the PISA rating for that section of Oregon, 21st Avenue to 28th?
I do not remember off the top of my head, but I believe it is in the three to five range.
It's the sewer.
It's the sewer project.
Well, it's, the Oregon Street is being reconstructed from 21st to the Glass Creek Bridge, and then from the Glass Creek Bridge to 28th Avenue is a sewer interceptor and patch. 28th Avenue from Oregon to the east terminus of 28th Avenue is a utility reconstruction and asphalt paving, as well as improvements to the 28th Avenue lift station, which are required in order to meet some code compliance issues so that we can safely get into that building to perform maintenance and inspect in preparation of being able to handle more flow coming from the south Main Street area.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
And the sewer that we're replacing, when was it installed?
Yeah, I, I don't remember exactly when it was installed, but it's, it's not so much condition as it is capacity in order to be able to handle flows so that we can relieve basement backup issues along Fond du Lac Road, as well as be able to serve development on the south side of the city. There's been a residential development down near Oregon and Ripple that has been restricted in their ability to develop because we do not have capacity for their full development. So they have been restricted in what they can develop at this point until we can get the sewer there. And even if this project stays on course, it'll be three more years until we get the sewer all the way there. So if we were to delay this, that would add another year that that development will be restricted.
And it's concrete paving?
Oregon Street is concrete paving, 28th Avenue is asphalt paving.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. James, will this eventually solve the problems along 41 with the, the development restraints that we have out there that are?
Long, long-term, this interceptor sewer will provide service to the highway, the interstate 41 frontage road area, yes. And that will take, eventually alleviate some of those capacity concerns that we have along the frontage road, yes.
Did you have something?
No.
All right. So then, but the main goal of this project was that capacity for that development?
That was the immediate driving factor. We made sure that the sewer was sized appropriately to be able to continue to serve south and eventually wrap around and col- collect those flows off of the frontage road areas to be able to alleviate those capacity issues as well.
So then, as I understand it, delaying or laying this over for 30 days, you're saying is going to cost us a year?
In order to complete the project, yes, because if we were to wait-
The rebid, the rebid?
Yeah, because we would have to rebid at that point, and we'd be looking at another four to six weeks from that in order to get that back in front of you. And then, you know, if we were to still try to complete the project in this year with losing two months of construction, costs would go up significantly because the contractor would have to factor in a lot of overtime in order to meet the schedule demands. And that's assuming we still have contractors that have room in their schedules available to bid the project.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you.
And then Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. James, can, can we shrink this project?
At this point with it being bid, no. You know, what's been bid is what's been bid. We can't make changes to it once the bids have been opened. You know, if it were awarded, and, you know, then we could go through a change order process potentially to, to shrink it, but again, that would impact, you know, anything we would try to take out would impact all of those schedules going forward.
And if you had to rate your projects on, on the list of projects tonight, where would this one, where, where would this one rank?
As far as all of the CIP projects that I'm involved in, or all the street projects, or what?
All the street projects that are on this list.
Well, there's only one street project on this list.
Oh, well, there's-
On, on the list tonight, quite frankly, item 20-113, 20-114, 20-115, and 20-116 are all tied together.
Okay.
So they, they all have aspects that impact the project.
All right. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robby, you mentioned the DNR being involved. Obviously, they issued permits for this project. Project gets delayed, how's that impact with the DNR?
As far as sewer and water extension permits, those would remain valid for a period of time that would survive a two to three month delay. The construction site permit would also not be an issue, so we would not be looking at having to reapply for those permits. The things that we're working on with Canadian National may or may not have some impacts. It's, it's hard to tell with, with them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McRrower, and then Mr. Van Gopel.
Appreciate it, thank you. And again, I appreciate where Councilmember Miller's coming from on this. I think we're, personally, I think we're going about it the wrong way, though, especially with where the last few minutes of the conversation went. We adjudicated the importance of these projects last November when we unanimously, unanimously approved our CIP. So to question the importance of the CIP purchases tonight is counterintuitive and counterproductive, and we shouldn't be, personally, we shouldn't be doing it. In light of the circumstances and the economic times we're in, let alone we're only in it, we're barely ankle-deep in this thing at this point, it may be appropriate to suggest laying things over, but to discuss restricting or shortening or, or changing a project at this point in the game, I don't think it's valid at this point to be, to be suggesting things like that. We had a lengthy discussion during our budget process that these were important projects to the city of Oshkosh. They're important today, they were important then, they will be important tomorrow, and it'll be even more important in six months. So if you'd like to lay things over and, and delay them that way, I think that would be an appropriate way to do it, but to, to individually say this is no longer important, I don't, I can't agree with that.
Mr. Van Gopel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Councilmember McRrower's comments, and he stole some of my thunder, but I share with you some experiences before I became employed with the city of Oshkosh, and one of those is dealing with, you know, we're dealing with really a difficult economic times, but we're also dealing with the whole bidding process. And what you're seeing is a presentation on what we should do with a project that's been bid. And I can share my past experience that when elected bodies decide not to accept a bid, once the bid has been let, it's very rare that you would come up with lower pricing, especially with the way things are right now. But that's a risky take, and you have to take it as elected officials. I would just caution, you know, we, we've got a process in place, the bidding has occurred, the bidding has been stated as far as when it's going to be accepted, when it's not going to be accepted, and then the market knows what the bid prices are. It's very rare that you come back with a lower price to do the project. I'm just offering you my advice as a finance director. You have to make the decision on where we're at as a policy decision-making process in front of the city council, but I wanted to share with you my experience.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Allison Osby.
I guess my question would be in this, I don't know if there's anyone here in the room that could answer it, perhaps maybe Mr. Roloff, but, you know, we went through similar times, but for a lot longer, starting in 2008 to 2009, and no recovery until approximately 2012. Did we halt all spending in all road construction projects during that time?
We actually accelerated our road construction during that time, and the contractors that were bidding on our projects all came to us and said, "Thank you for continuing to bid work, you're the only one doing it." And we, we got very competitive bids on a lot of projects during that time.
Mr. Miller, anything else?
I was going to definitely vote no on this, listening to James and Russ and Matt lecturing me, thank you. I'm going to vote yes for this, but not based on anything you guys told me. I'm going to vote yes on this because I just don't want to put more people out of work at this time. So, thank you all for changing my mind.
Council, oh, Councilmember Crowsey.
I just had a question. If we had to rebid these, how much staff hours of this entail? I mean, I would assume this would add up, wouldn't it?
It, it would involve some minor modifications to the documents in order to change all the dates. Then there would be costs associated with advertising the bids. There would be costs associated with contractors taking the plans out and looking at them and doing all their bidding again. So there would be costs both to us and people that would take the plans out and submit bids.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, you know, I'd just like to thank everybody for their comments because I don't think anybody wants to take any decision we make from this, not that we've ever taken them lightly, but I think we're looking at it with a different lens. And certainly, Mr. McRrow, appreciate, you know, we've all spent a lot of time on the city budget. Frankly, that was before we had a situation where we have today with things that are very uncertain, and I know that we will continue to provide those city services and those basic services, and essentially the priorities that the long-range finance worked so hard on, the, the rankings. Again, that was before the situation we're in. Public safety and health and basic sanitation obviously are important, and roads are important in order to deliver that service, so I will be supporting this. All right, please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McRrower.
Aye.
Mary Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. Next is Resolution 20-114. We'll take a motion and a second on the approving, approving the agreement for professional services related to construction of city contract number 20-5, Work Unit B, West 28th Avenue Pump Station Upgrades, Jacobs Engineering Group, $445,775. Shall we take this, are we able, city attorney, to combine this with 115 and 116?
Generally, when you pull them, you do them each by a separate bolt, so.
All right, thank you.
I move 114.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Miller, you?
Done, done, thank you, yeah. Yeah, in the interest of time, yes, thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McRrower.
Aye.
Mary Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. Resolution 20-115, approved purchases of traffic signal equipment to Tapco and lighting poles and fixtures to Enterprise Lighting LTD for the Oregon Street Reconstruction Project 2005, $97,643.56.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McRrower.
Aye.
Mary Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. And Resolution 20-116, approved professional services agreement for construction materials testing for the 2020 Capital Improvement Program, Professional Service Industries, PSI, $81,475.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McRrower.
Aye.
Mary Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. All right, now we are going to go to 20-120, correct, Angela?
120, correct.
All right. Approved purchase of manhole inlet castings for the Streets Division, Streets Division of the Department of Public Works, $26,806. Back to council for motion in a second.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question, James. On this resolution, this is just more or less inventory so that when we have manholes blown up or other things related to our inlets and castings, that we have inventory to replace them. It's just the maintenance.
Yes, this is for the Streets Division to be able to take care of all the manholes and inlets on our storm sewer and sanitary sewer systems, you know, so if you're, you know, driving down a street and a casting is sunk several inches and you get that bum 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 bump as you drive over it, Streets Division is the one that goes out and digs it up and fixes it, and these castings are for doing those types of repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Miller, any further discussion on that one, then?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, please take the roll on 20-120, approved purchase of manholes. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
McRrower.
Aye.
Mary Palmieri.
Aye.
Carried seven. All right, next is 20-121, different category here. Approved spotlight designation, authorized redevelopment authority to acquire 1004 South Main Street, $119,000. Approved budget amendment.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Miller.
Alan, can you, can you brief everybody at home on this one, please?
Yes, this is a property that's available in the newly designated Sodas District along Main Street. You recall, the long-range plan is to widen Main Street on the east side of the road. Here's a property owner that presented an opportunity for us to buy the property at assessed value, and it's vacant right now, so there's no relocation costs, so it's about as good a deal as the city could be presented at this point in time. And the budget, the CIP funds have been budgeted for other acquisition and demolitions around the city, so this just fits the bill for that.
If I remember correctly, we're, we've paid about $31 a square foot for other property in that neighborhood, is that accurate?
Yes.
What are we paying per square foot for this property?
No, I'm going to say it's somewhere around the $15 a square foot.
So we're, we're getting it for half price?
Compared to other properties, yes.
Thank you.
And, and if we weren't going to approve that tonight, then we'd have to go through the whole 30-day process, a notification, and the RDA would have to meet again, and then we'd have to come back to council.
I, I thought this was a hell of a bargain, so I'm reluctantly going to vote yes because I strongly supported this last week, so.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to ask the question, would council receive a request to lay this over for 30 days? I realize that this is an opportunity and that it, it may seem like the right thing to do, given previous circumstances. What would 30 days delay in the decision on this do?
Well, the property owner would have to agree to it, and that's not a given, and then we'd have to renotice the RDA meeting for the spotlight public hearing and bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember McRrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Funds for this acquisition are coming from?
CIP funds for acquisition and demolition of blighted properties in the scattered sites and on the south shore, and this kind of fits the bill for both of that.
Is it city funds, or is it any federal grant dollars or anything like that in terms of money coming from somebody else and not tax dollars?
This one is city funds, the other two are, the next two are actually federal funds.
Appreciate it, thank you for the clarification.
Just one question.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Mr. Davis, on that account, dealing with the 2020 former sanitation building demo, does that mean we're not tearing the building down?
Yeah, we, we defer that for another year.
Well, that's where I wanted the police department to go, okay.
Well, I can-
Not the department there, storage building. Okay, got it.
That's good. That, that building is used for storage by, by quite several departments right now, so that's-
I'm sure it is, but we could save some money if we don't have to build on that other third avenue and move it to that third avenue, but thank you.
Well, I would like to offer a motion to lay this over for 30 days. Died for a second. All right, please take the roll. Crowsey.
Aye.
Pashel.
Aye.
Miller. Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
No.
Carried 6-1. Resolution 20-122, approved spotlight designation, authorized redevelopment authority to acquire 1628 Liberty Street, $26,500.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Alan, you wanna brief the people at home on this, please?
Sure, the Council's given us the direction to pursue code violation properties for elimination as quickly as possible. We're using community development block grant funds, so these are the federal funds. Both this property and the next property are under orders from the city for raise, and the RDA has gone through the process of spotlighting that, so we've done the public hearing, and I believe this meets all the criteria that we've set out for eliminating blighted influences in neighborhoods, and we have federal funds to use that. And if we don't use the federal funds, we'd be in danger of having to return the federal funds, so I would strongly recommend using those.
All right, any further discussion? Please take the roll. Crowsey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried 7. And Resolution 20-123, approved spotlight designation, authorized redevelopment authority to acquire 422 Otter Avenue, $15,000.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
You wanna hit repeat?
It's under orders as well, we use federal funds, and this one's actually in a great visible location that will help that neighborhood greatly.
Thank you, Alan.
All right, please take the roll. Crowsey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried 7. All right, and I believe the next one was 20-127, is that right? Correct. Okay, we're kinda skipping around a little bit here. All right. Council, I need a motion in a second on 20-127, approved change order number one with Linco for additional demolition in the East 700 block of South Main Street, $242,100, and approved amendment to professional service agreement with AECOM for demolition management and environmental issues in the East 700 block of South Main Street, plus $40,820, approved budget amendment.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Alan, this is the, this is the Lewick property, is that accurate?
The vacant Lewick property, yes.
Yes.
We acquired that in the month, last month or so, and fortunately, we have a demolition contractor working on the neighboring properties, so I believe they gave us a very good amendment to do that demolition. If we didn't do that tonight, then I'm afraid they'd leave and come back, and this would be a much higher price, and we'd have a blighted property standing there longer. And we're still motivated to try to get an RFP out for those eight or nine acres still this spring, so that we can see redevelopment north of Ninth Avenue up to the river.
How long would it take them to redeploy, and what cost do you think the city would incur by postponing this 60 days?
As a comparison, the original bid for just 43 East 7th was in the $450,000 neighborhood. My fear would be, if we did that, it would be back in that neighborhood again. I don't have any evidence of that, but that's just the other project that we had that they bid originally. And if we can take it down now with the, that means the rec lanes and the pro shop can come down as well, because they were reluctant to tear that down since the wall and the roof are.
Joined.
Joined, yes.
Share a firewall, right, is that it?
They share, they share a wall and a roof, yes. So, I'd almost have to keep the rec lanes and the upholstery shop up, because otherwise it'd be, they'd be leaving a half-wall, half-roof.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Open.
Mr. Davis, in our memo, there appears they found the underground storage tank of some sort?
Yes, when we were doing the demolition in Phase 1s, there were more underground storage tanks that were not indicated in the original.
And this was a form of foundry location at one time, back in the days?
That's what I'm told, yes.
And so, there would be, there was a double floor because of the foundry?
That's what I'm told, yes.
So, those types of things all add to the cost of the project that we're on, knowing when the project was initially bid at all?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
He asked my question.
All right.
Sorry, Bob. It's all right.
Any further discussion? All right, on this one, I would also offer a motion to lay this over for 30 days.
Second.
Discussion. All right, please take, Mr. McGraw?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the one thing about delaying this one is I fear his, Mr. Davis' premonition is right by them, by the contractor, possibly leaving the project and going on to other things, that the cost goes up dramatically. This is something we, we obviously want to see down, that whether you vote for or against delaying it, I know every one of us wants to see that property down and clear and something good going on there, but I'm not willing to gamble with the taxpayers' money, money at this point. I get it, in private business, you can, you can choose to do certain things and hold back cash and delay projects, but I'm not playing with my own money, I'm playing with other people's money, and I, I don't take that lightly, so I, I risk significantly increasing our costs by delaying this one, so I cancel that.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. McGraw. We're already on-site, we approved the purchase of the property, we need it down. This kind of reminds me a little bit of the Buckstaff property, which is all part of the southwest industrial park area, district, that we don't know what we don't know until we get in the ground, kind of theory, and this being an old business district, we're gonna run into this no matter what. And I, I agree, I don't think we're gonna get any lower bids, because they're already there, and so pulling them off-site, pulling their equipment off-site, I don't think is going to have a drastic impact at this point. So, I'm gonna vote no on the amendment.
Any further discussion on the motion to lay over? All right, please take the roll. Crowsey?
No.
Pascal?
No.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
No.
Herman?
No.
McGraw?
No.
Mayor, Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Lost 5-2. All right, so back to the 20-127 on the change order. Motion in a second.
Already have it.
We already have that, so take the roll, or did we want any further discussion?
Mayor, may I?
Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Herman kinda hit on it in his, in his last comments. Are we, would, would it be wise to think that this price that we have in this change order here may actually go up, and there may be another change order that comes back to us?
Worst-case scenario, yes, because until you take everything down, you don't know what's actually hidden underneath.
So, and, and in general, does this amount here include the taking down of Lewicks as well as the demolition and removal of those tanks?
Yes.
So, it's not just taking down of Lewicks that we're, that we're doing this change over?
It's taking out the tanks we know of, there could be other tanks that we discover when we take out, take down the final buildings.
All right. Now, my next question relates to regulatory entities like the DNR in relation to aspects of like this, because we, we could authorize this today and find that, once they start work, they might, they might have to stop work because of what they find related to what's in those tanks as well, correct?
Yes, technically, that is correct. Typically, it'll become a site that we will work with DNR to, and that's actually why we hire AECOM, to make sure that we properly document the disposal of all those tanks and the associated contaminated soils. So, my expectation is, as long as we follow the DNR rules, we shouldn't have a problem with removing those. And we'll document that so that when we do the RFP, we can show that we've met the DNR requirements for proper disposal.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Miller?
Alan, so we could run into additional costs, so we're kind of dealing with the unknown on this?
Unfortunately, when you're dealing with tearing down buildings, we can find things underneath the foundation that you can't find until you tear out the foundation. So, the example with the 43 East 7th, there were tanks that nobody knew about until we actually removed the foundation, and we could find that at Lewicks, we don't know that yet, but until you actually tear it out, you don't know.
So, backs to Matt, Matt's point, we're risking taxpayers' money on both sides of the fence on this one?
Yes, whenever you're doing demolition, you can always find things underneath. The risk side here is that we don't have a contractor typically on-site, so the, we've minimized the upside risk by having the contractor on-site, because I think that's saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You really, you really believe that?
If I recall, the, just the 43 East 7th was, if memory serves me, is about $450,000, and that didn't include, did not include the tanks, that's why we're doing the change order.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, please take the roll. Crowsey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
No.
Carried 6-1. All right, Resolution 20-128, award bid to Stats Restoration for exterior rehabilitation for the Public Museum Carriage House, $67,700.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Miller?
Mark, anybody here to take this one, or is it you?
It's me, and I, I can't tell you, I have a ton of information, this is really a bid award, so I would be prepared to talk about the bid award, I know Mr. Larson did talk about this. My suggestion, in the, in the absence of my being able to give you a decent answer on, on this, I know it was discussed during the, the budget workshop and everything, I would recommend that you defer action on this one. The likelihood of us having another meeting, our regular meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting, is pretty high, so, you know, this would be delaying this one two weeks. I can't look at you in the eye with the confidence that the other departments have done with some of the other ones, those I was very concerned about. I can't tell you that tonight, and I don't want to tell you something that, and not be truthful about it. So, my suggestion would be, if you have any concerns, that it wouldn't be inappropriate to lay it over.
I make a.
Councilmember Allison Osby?
I make a motion to lay it over, I think it's only fair to Mr. Larson to have him be able to speak to it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over? Please take the roll. Crowsey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
No.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried 6-1. All right, so that motion, or Resolution 20-128 is laid over until the next council meeting?
Thank you.
All right? Next is Resolution 20-129, approve agreement with Pentira LLC for database subscription software and support for Go Transit 2020 through 2022, $102,000. Back to Council for motion in a second.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mark?
This is an ongoing maintenance with our tablet system, this is a three-year contract, so it's $34,000 a year. We need to maintain this, and I would recommend Council approve this. And Brad's gonna be mad at me, because that's the only one sitting there, look, I'm very familiar with this one, because Mr. Collins and I talked, to keep the crowd down tonight, I talked to him a little bit about this one.
So, what would be a two-week or a 30-day delay, or this being laid over, what would be the impact?
We need the software support now, not, you know, this is an ongoing contract we have, and the contract's expiring. We're back here because we need to maintain that. That's something that, that's our database support for our tablet system within Go Transit. So, we would have no contract, and that would be no reason, if we had a problem with the tablets, there'd be no reason for this person to support our, our, our work.
So, the $102,000 pays for another three years?
Yeah, it's a three-year award, we're only gonna be spending $34,000 a year.
All right. Anyone have any further discussion on 20-129? Please take the roll. Crowsey?
Aye.
Pascal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
McGraw?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried 7. All right, 20-130, I believe is the last one that we pulled, right? Correct. Okay. Approved professional services proposal to Northland Recreation for Playground Design and Installation for Congress Avenue Tot Lot, $170,000. Back to Council for motion in a second.
Still moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Davis, I think all council members received a couple emails from citizens, I believe this is being moved forward, not only from the planning department, but from our neighborhood association in that area. Are they using any of their grant dollars or anything towards this project?
Yes, in fact, earlier, the Council awarded Great Neighborhoods funds towards this project in conjunction with the Rock the Block project that's happening in May here, so it's all kind of a, a package of a number of project improvements that include private improvements and public improvements. This is the public improvement part that we'd be approving tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis, just a question here, so this is for design and installation, right? So, the design has not yet been done?
I believe most of the design was done. I hate to speak for Mr. Maurer, but I thought we incorporated a lot of that with the neighborhood association, so they knew what they were going to bid out, so I-
So, given that we've just closed the playground sets temporarily for kids to play on playground equipment, is there the potential that the design could be redesigned in light of future anticipated?
You know, with, when you're dealing with the playground sets, you're really working with the neighborhood association and the contractor to come up with the design. It's a sort of a competitive design, and each firm provides an idea of what they would do. In these cases with the budget, we say, what can you give us for $170,000? And they propose what the best use of that $170 is, and that's, and essentially, the neighborhood association evaluates and says, this is the one we would like best. And so you typically work within the parameters of the budget, so that it doesn't exceed the budget, but it maximizes what the neighborhood would like. So, the design is really, it's an inclusive package because you're, you're buying the, sort of the artistic interpretation. We've had this discussion with the city attorney many times because it's, well, it's just a slide, it's just a this or that. Well, it's, it's more, it's really, there's, there are some design aspects to it that the neighborhoods select when they, when they go through this process.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Being on the parks board, I've been through this process several times, and what the, what the architect does, and Ellen, please challenge me or jump in here at any time, but they typically get to three renderings, and they have the neighbors pick a rendering. I see no reason whatsoever that we couldn't lay this one over. I mean, it, it's just, to me, this is not a community necessity right now. I, I just, for the life of me, can't imagine this is a life or death must-have.
So are you offering a motion to lay it over?
I'm, I'm offering a motion to lay it over, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
For how long?
30 days.
I'll second. Discussion?
I guess I'd like to defer to Mr. Roloff in regards to whether, what his discussions were with Mr. Maurer related to this.
Well, I think Ellen covered some of those things, and I guess I'd rather refer it back because I know the neighborhood associations are very engaged in this, and it has to do with the Rock the Block, is what, what Ray had mentioned to me, that they've got some events coming up of which this will be part of it.
Yes, and I thought they, they've already looked at the five different options, and this is the one they like the most, so if you defer it for 30 days, I don't think the neighborhood association's gonna change their mind. It's just a matter of, they'll probably come back with the same version 30 days later. It's just that we probably won't get anything ready for Rock the Block at that point.
Well, as I understood it, Mr. Davis, isn't this like, one of the multiple list of projects for Rock the Block? They already have the actual home repairs and that scheduled as part of this. This is just one piece.
Correct. That's why I said it's many things that come together, and they're also working on the Congress field with the university, so there's a lot of pieces that come together. This is one that I think we were expecting that the neighborhood association would be able to see that improvement taking place the same time as the private projects.
Understood. I know, we've had a lot of plans like that, and it's my understanding that Habitat is very optimistically hoping that the Rock, the Rock the Block projects can still continue, I believe it's mid-May.
Yeah.
So, very good. Mr. Miller, did you get your questions answered on that then?
I did.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to lay over for 30 days. Oh, Deputy Mayor Herman.
Mr. Roloff, just one question on laying that over. It's designed, or, first off, it wouldn't go forward if the governor's order stays in place anyways, or would the, would the work continue, it just, no one would be able to use it when it's completed, if the order from the governor is still in place?
Yeah, my understanding is this is public work that would be allowed to continue, but you are correct, when, upon completion, if the governor's order is still in place, the kids will be very, very tempted, looking at a very brand-new lot, and they won't, we are gonna prohibit entry to that. We've had several discussions over the last few days about that issue. Okay, thank you.
All right, can we please take the roll on the motion to lay over for 30 days?
Crowsey?
No.
Peshal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
This is a tough one. No.
Herman?
No.
Mugerower?
No.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Lost 3-4.
All right. I believe that concludes-
No, we have to vote on the original.
That was the amendment.
The amendment law.
The layover. We will now vote on the actual resolution, 20-130.
Mayor.
Councilmember Peshal.
Thank you. Looking back at, at our emails that we've gotten in the last couple days related to this issue, there was one, there was one citizen that asked about whether the improvement to this lot would reduce water and the swampiness to the site. So I'm wondering if there's anyone that can address that question?
It's pouring place, isn't it? All our parks are going to pour in place? Yeah, the, I don't know if I can directly answer that question because, but Mr. Herman's right, the, you know, there is a poured-in-place pad, so on the pad itself, that'll, that'll get regraded and things like that. I don't know if there are any other drainage issues. I'm not familiar with, I've, I've walked the site when Ray was pitching it to me, but it didn't have any drainage issues at that time, but that was late summer.
Historically, it's been, it's been a swampy site. I've, I've played there with my kids in the past and everything, so-
I have a drainage guy behind me, so maybe he can help us.
In some of the conversations with Go HNI and the neighborhood association, the university is looking at some potential options to try to improve drainage on that lot. They have requested information from the engineering division office as far as what's available for storm sewer connections, to be able to connect some drainage facilities from the field into the lot. As of right now, I'm not aware of what their plans are, but they are looking at it, and they are asking, you know, the questions that would indicate to me that they're, they're trying to make some improvements in that regard.
Mr. Robbie, if I could follow up. So earlier this summer, as I was biking through that neighborhood, talking with some of the neighbors, there was a gentleman on the corner across from the Tot Lot that referenced a previous, I think it was maybe hydrant or other water source that had been disconnected at that corner, and he was showing me kind of a crack in the sidewalk, but he continually gets water in his basement and had been in touch with the city numerous times, and I guess my question is, does any of the drainage address anything related to that? I guess it would be the southwest corner, the lot diagonal from the Tot Lot.
The only things the university would be working on would be projects on, you know, their property itself, which is, you know, the Congress Avenue lot, not, you know, they would not be working on anything, you know, for adjacent properties. I'm not 100% aware of the, the potential issue. I know I did receive a contact at one point in time about a crack in some of the sidewalk, but I had not been made aware of some drainage issues that I can recall for, for that area.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mogerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just wanted to, and I know Councilmember Herman alluded to it before, but I think most of council received a few emails, a few messages from neighbors in that, in that area, and I just wanted to thank them for their efforts. Congress Avenue, Neighborhood Association, thank you guys for, for the work you guys put into this design and, and just trying to improve your neighborhood in general. I know last year, the Sixth Avenue and Fifth Avenue neighborhoods, the Sacred Heart area, you know, they got a new playground as part of their Rock the Block efforts as well, and those types of things just instill a little bit of extra hope in the neighborhoods and a sense of community, and, and it shows that, you know, city and city staff and city councils committed to improving neighborhoods, and so just appreciate their support, and I absolutely will support the park improvement.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. I guess to maybe add on to what Mr. Mogerower said, you know, considering this is something out of all the expenditures that we approved tonight, this one is one that we talk about. If this council is truly for kids, this certainly adds to the neighborhood. You know, this is all hypothetical as far as the situation we're in, how long it lasts. If it does last for a while, the economic impact will last far longer than the virus will, and this is something in which will, if indeed families are impacted by it economically, it is, it is something that's free for kids, and it is something that's already in our capital improvements project, or capital improvements budget, not coming from our operational.
All right, well, I would agree with many of these points that have been brought forward, and certainly, I am not interested in being the ogre of playground delay. However, I, I still think that we could potentially delay this just for 30 days, just put a few things on pause. It will not stop Rock the Block, and certainly does not diminish all of the work and desire for this to go forward, but we, I think we do have to start being a little more prudent, and I may be in the minority on that, and there we go. Please take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peshal?
Aye.
Miller?
As the second ogre on the council, no.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
No.
Carried 5-2.
All right. So that does conclude the consent agenda item, and next is council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items.
Figured it's just easier for me to come up. Both of our, were upcoming workshops that have been postponed. The website was gonna be tonight, and next week, the Department of Corrections. We've notified the residents, and I think it's probably pretty obvious to them, and Department of Corrections. So, once we have a, you know, a timeline that we can start having these types of meetings, we'll, we'll get it back on.
All right. Just want to make a quick little mention on the website. I appreciate the public updates that are going out on COVID-19 on our webpage. For those of you who are looking for city-specific updates on COVID-19, those are posted. It has been daily since the situation began.
Councilmember Mogerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to discussions we had earlier, it'd be appropriate for us to give city manager and his staff some guidance and some direction on bringing forth a resolution, potentially pushing back any of those special assessments, the, from 2019, as Finance Director Van Gompo alluded to, as well as, you know, Mr. Robbie chimed in and Mr. Roloff too. If council wants to, this would be the time to, to advise him to put together something to bring to the next meeting for us to figure out, to look at, to start that process. Doesn't mean we have to vote next meeting, but to at least give them guidance on something that we might like to see to, to potentially help people out.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Mogerower on that, you know, maybe we could see what the budget impact would be, plus to Mr. Mogerower's point too, that the long-range finance committee, what would that have an impact on? We did a sizable dent in getting down to where we want it to be with our, you know, long-range financing and things like that, so just what that impact would be, and, and probably by the next council meeting, or as we go in after the election council meeting, which I won't be part of, but other, a new council member will be, or three, they'll have some information to how that's gonna impact, and impact because we may have to, future councils may have to adjust that through a policy decision.
Given what discussions I've already had with staff, and despite the fact that we had a very large agenda tonight, and that was after I cut things from the agenda, certain things were gonna have to be coming back, I anticipate, unless there's some, you know, unless there's a real negative downturn, and, you know, council members aren't available or something more drastic, I anticipate we're gonna have a meeting on April 14th. I think it's gonna be unavoidable to keep continuity of government. It'll still be a limited agenda, but things like this, I think you want to have a discussion about. We'll try to do it within the next two weeks. If I'm not ready with that, we'll just do it the next one. It's, it's not a time urgent, but certainly, I think council wants to send a message on that issue, and I understand that. I, I, I can tell when, when, when there's some, some pretty strong feelings about that, but we gotta take a look at the numbers, as Councilmember Allison Osby mentioned. So-
I get to Councilmember Miller's point, and I apologize for interrupting, but it's just a, it's another tool in our toolbag. You know, I think that's what he's been looking for all night, in terms of some of the discussions we've had, just, you know, additional tool to try to help people out if, if, if we at all can. Let's try to be as flexible and adaptable as, as possible, or as my wife would tell me, as agile as possible, so.
Okay, we'll have that on our next agenda.
Oh, there you go.
Pardon me for an hour, but kind of along those lines, Mark, you know, I, I think it's real obvious where, where I want to go here in the short term. Thanks for pointing that out, Matt. But, I mean, I, assuming you're, you're asking for some real spending restraint among, among your department heads and, and things like that, and we're battening down the hatches, and, and we might want to consider hiring freezes and, and some of those things, I mean, are-
We're, this is still very early in the process, and we're evaluating, you know, everything, but first and foremost, we gotta get our, we gotta get our sea legs for this one, and we're, and, you know, we're still working on that. I think we've done some great work, which we're gonna talk to you about in a little bit, but it's still a very fluid situation. I've had discussions, for example, Amy Albright with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Convention and Visitors Bureau, thank goodness, their, their financial position, they've, they've held reserves, and boy, are they gonna need it because the, the, the bottom's fallen out of room tax.
Room tax, yeah.
That'll have impacts on us, but not, not as nearly as much as it will on the CBB, but it'll certainly have impacts on us as well, and we're still, you know, putting things together, but we are, we have to, we have to consider those types of things. So, as we get our sea legs, we'll be talking to you about that. I'm not in a position tonight, though, but-
I understood, and I wasn't expecting it to.
We know, we know. We gotta look at that stuff.
Well, I think everybody is interested in, you know, hoping for those events and, you know, the tourism and that to return, but we do have to deal with today as well.
As a courtesy to council, because normally, we put a lot of these bid awards on consent, and I think even though, you know, many of them passed, most of them passed tonight, you want the ability to talk about that. I'll take them all off consent so you can have the opportunity to talk about them. I think that's just fair to council. You know, you may pass them 7-0, but that's, that's your prerogative, so we'll take them off consent for next time.
I think more importantly, Mark, I think for the people at home to understand why we're spending their money in these times, if we address these one by one, I think the people watching probably have a better understanding of our decision-making process.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have city manager announcements and statements, and update regarding absentee voting.
What I, what I'd like to do, just for, in terms of flowing things, we have the fourth quarter combined reports in there. You know, we are, our initial expectation is we have about, about a million-two to the good expenditures under revenues, which is very good, given everything we just discussed very timely. This is pre-audit, and, you know, that may take a while to get the audit done with everything because things are a little fluid, but very pleased with Mr. Van Gompo being able to get that information out and the departments to do it, because they've been a little occupied. So we got this out just, just in the nick of time. So, happy to answer any questions, if, if you have any, on the financial report, and Mr. Van Gompo is certainly available as well.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. Mr. Roloff, so one, something that's come up, obviously, with the election coming up, a question coming from, you know, our senior population is, you know, currently, there's a lot of seniors that are self-quarantining, or self-quarantine themselves, and obviously should not be out in public. Many of them also may not have computers or the ability to get on the internet. So how are we going to deal with that as far as them absentee voting?
As I understand, Mr. Roloff too, could I add like a second part to that, that there's a problem with witnesses?
So I assume there's no questions about the fourth quarter financials?
No.
No.
No, okay.
You got off easy.
Okay, good.
Well, I'm just-
Yeah, we have initiated an aggressive campaign, both in print and social media and whatnot, to encourage people to, to vote, vote by mail. You will see a full-page ad in this week's Herald. It'll continue next week as well. You're gonna see, I'm, I'm asking staff to basically put out all the stops because the state is not really helping us. I'm, they are dragging their feet on doing anything, and I'm, I'm very disappointed in that. I've tried to get my fellow municipal officials to, to calm down, but when I'm speaking before you and seeing what they're not doing, it frustrates me as well. It's unfair, and all my colleagues who I tell to calm down have stoked me, and so I should thank them tomorrow for me to say this, but our residents are conflicted because they want to vote, but they don't want to show up, and some of the communities are closing their, their city halls to having in-person voting. I think that that is voter suppression. That's not a political statement. That is just a fact of, if we don't let them come in, because that's the only way right now they know how to vote, then we're, we're telling them they can't vote, and, you know, Angela and her staff with, with Pam being out, she'll be back Tuesday, by the way, they're, they're getting swamped, and, but the residents want this, and they're willing to wait. They're waiting outside this building, waiting their turn because we're keeping it very much separated as much as possible, but we want to encourage people to vote, so we decided to take a more positive approach and push the mail in as much as possible. With that said, I don't think the state ever designed the My Vote system with this in mind, so that's been, that's been a trouble for them. I, I can understand that part of it. They are feverishly working to try to fix it because everybody's trying to download it. Not everybody, apparently, I mean, but most people are. The campaign will say, you can look at it online, we will mail you one. We'll mail you absentee ballot request. We have to get that information from you. The ad will show you how to do that, and then it'll go back to Angela and, and the election staff. They'll send out an absentee ballot. They could, the person can return it, all done in the mail. So, we're, we're trying to hit every type of medium, both, you know, real high-level, high-tech, and very low-tech. So, we figured the, the Herald was one way to do it, but, you know, I want to hit radio, I want to hit TV, I'm hoping that other communities will jump on the bandwagon. I spoke with some folks in Fond du Lac today, they were very excited. Ms. Ubrich in Abstentia- Ms. Hubrig in Abstentia gave some advice to the folks in Fond du Lac. They're very interested in that. So that's what we're going to do, and we're hoping that the media will pick up on it and say absentee by mail is the most effective way, and we'll manage the piles that come. Yeah, Ange rolls her eyes, like, it'll be tough, but we'll do it.
So right now, can, okay, given, back to Councilmember Allison Asby's point, given that there are some senior communities that they can't leave and no one can go in to visit other than people who are employed there, are there mechanisms to get absentee ballots to those locations and that so that they can do this by mail?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
We offer a different couple of things. I've walked some people that are not tech savvy on the phone, they can call, we'll help them with that. If they cannot get out, or if they're able to come to the parking lot, we'll go to their car. Otherwise, if they say, no, I'm confined, there's no absolute way for me to get out, we'll send them an application. I'll highlight the form. If they say that they're indefinitely confined, they do not have to provide ID when they return the ballot or the absentee request.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We did spend, consulted with the city attorney. We can't just send mass ballots out. Our law doesn't provide for that, so we have to wait for the request, but it's things like that that Angela mentioned that...
Have them call.
Have them call. We'll do everything within our customer service universe available to help them with that.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Is it possible to reach out to all the assisted living and nursing homes to say this is available?
Angela?
Yep. We've done the nursing home voting actually by mail already, so we've taken care of that. And I know Bella Vista, there was a lady there, she had a whole bunch of forms filled out, so as much as we, you know...
It's probably Beth.
What was that?
It's probably Beth, their activities director. She's on it.
But certainly have them give us a call, and, you know, we're here, we'll help.
Angela and her staff have been awesome.
Thank you.
So that's absentee voting. We're going to keep pushing...
Councilmember Mugerar.
Sorry. Angie, would you mind giving us an update? Because absentee voting is obviously, it's the thing right now. We'd like them to do, safety-wise for themselves as well as staff and everything, and across the state, as Mark alluded to, the requests are through the roof. Where are we, in Oshkosh, where do we stand, and how many of you mailed out for people?
Before I came upstairs, we were at 6,000 mailed requests. We've had about 400 people come in the office, and then they just keep dropping by email. So I know, she said she had a couple hundred in her email when they did, so...
In a normal year?
High, even a high year, between office and mailing, I think maybe 8,000, so.
And we're two weeks away.
Sounds good. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ange. That's all I have about the absentee voting. We're going to keep pushing it out, you'll hear more. COVID-19 emergency response, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Stanley to give you an update on where we are. I'm very proud of the work that Chief's been doing. The collaboration with our surrounding agencies has been really great, and I'm proud of the fact that Chief Stanley's reached out to his fire peers to assist us in this.
Evening, Mayor and council members. Just want to give you some quick updates since we've talked last, last week, that obviously one of the most significant developments statewide is the shelter-in-place or the stay-at-home declaration that happened yesterday. Many questions and rumors running rampant right now about will there be some type of checkpoints for people out driving around? Will there be some kind of special licensing or permitting process that you have a different driver's license to prove your essential personnel? That is rumor and conjecture at this time. The governor has not indicated that that will occur at all. So will that change in the future? I can't promise that, but, you know, for the sake of rumor control, that is not something we foresee at this time. You know, it is not, there has been no discussion from our state offices that would put that decree out, whether it be the governor's office or Wisconsin Emergency Management. So we're not hearing that at that time, so just want to try to control that rumor. Last time we talked, last week, we had five positive cases in Winnebago County. Here we are, a week later, we still have those same five positive cases in Winnebago County. You know, I think that's very encouraging, you know, while there is, you know, tremendous disruption to our community, to our entire society, but, you know, the desire to flatten the curve hopefully is occurring, and we're seeing it here, that we have not seen that dramatic increase in persons under investigation either in Winnebago County. And what a person under investigation means is someone that had enough clinical indicators or enough history that they were, had a medical order to have the COVID-19 testing. You know, so we are not seeing a dramatic increase, and in fact, we've seen a decrease in persons under investigation in the county. So we'll continue to prepare for the worst and hope for the best, but I think that's something that we can be hopeful about and optimistic about, is that we are not seeing that rapid acceleration that much of the rest of the state is.
Chief, could I just ask a clarification on that then?
Absolutely.
So on the county website, the county health department website where they show those numbers, they started adding the number of increase, either positive, negative, or pending...
Correct.
As of a certain date. So the last update was, I think, the 22nd, but it seems like it only had like nine between the number of negative and pending, and then the zero positive. So does that mean, help us understand, does that mean that there's only been nine that have been processed in two days?
No, that's nine that have been added to that list. You know, so I think what day today is?
It's the 24th.
Yeah, and which day of the week, sorry, that they're all kind of blending together.
Yep.
Monday, we had an increase in, of nine cases that were under investigation in the county. Because of negative testing, you know, we didn't see an increase today in that number, and we had people that came off of that PUI list or Person Under Investigation list because they've now tested negative. You know, so we're seeing that total number of persons under investigation not increase, but start to decrease because the test results are in and they're testing negative. You know, so again, very encouraging of not seeing anybody test positive, but seeing less people that need to be tested. You know, so they're not presenting either with the travel history or with the symptoms of COVID-19 where their medical provider is saying they need to be tested. You know, that's, we have also not seen in Winnebago County, community spread, which is also very important, that we have seen in other counties statewide and certainly worldwide and nationwide, community spread, you know, that we have not seen that in Winnebago County at this time. So that also is something I think we're very fortunate about. That as we've been working in the Emergency Operations Center, you know, many mottos and mantras have come out every day, but one of them has consistently been that we're out front, we're going to stay out front. You know, so like I said, our numbers are encouraging, we're being proactive, you know, in what we do. We still maintain the same priorities that I discussed last week of, first priority is the safety of our community, the secondary priority is safety of our employees, and then our third consideration is continuity of operations.
Could you, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you again? Could you just explain to the public how we are protecting our employees?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we did very early on was restrict access to city buildings, to the public, you know, to limit access to city buildings. To, we are, have implemented disinfecting protocols that happen a couple of times a day, that, you know, workstations, countertops, you know, high-contact areas are being, elevator buttons are constantly and consistently being disinfected. We have also, you know, sent out messaging consistently about reminding the recommendations of the CDC of social distancing, six feet apart, wash your hands with soap and water, cover your cough if you're sick, stay home. And we have also put a moratorium on board and committee meetings, as you guys well know, and we have asked that meetings be canceled that are not absolutely necessary to increase social distancing, to do web-based meetings, teleconferences, phone meetings, so that we're limiting that interaction in increasing the social distancing. You know, that's clearly like with, we were just talking about voting, you know, that we won't let more than 10 people into the city building here on the first floor at a time, so that everybody isn't crowded in here waiting in line for the voting. So we're monitoring that, not letting, you know, there's six voting booths, somebody is monitoring the use of those, that we staged no more than three people in the lobby, the rest are staged outside, you know, so that we restrict that flow. So I mean, I could talk for probably two hours, which nobody here wants to happen, about the things that we're doing, you know, we're evaluating alternating work schedules to increase social distancing, we're evaluating currently telecommuting options, things of that nature, so that we can keep them safe.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Chief Stanley, a question for you. So for the citizens at home that work at larger manufacturing facilities, warehouse facilities, if they see something wrong, not being held up to standard, where do they reach out? Where do they report that issue to?
You know, I would encourage people to first start internally, that there should be organizational risk management, you know, HR, a supervisory chain, that they need to start there, you know, because Chief Smith may be able to comment more, but I don't know that we have the enforcement authority of that, and that's certainly out of my area of expertise, so I'll let Chief Smith talk to that a little bit.
And I believe, Chief Stanley, isn't there, on the county health department website, a phone number, there's a 232-3026 COVID-19 hotline, but I believe there's like a link below that about business concerns, and maybe Chief Smith can speak to that.
You are absolutely correct. Any concerns as it relates to manufacturing and those businesses that are permitted to be open, as it relates to social distancing, relates to providing security for the employees, those should be directed specifically to the health department, who would be investigating those types of issues.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Asby.
Since we have Chief Smith, I had asked a question earlier. There was a number of calls that came in after the governor had made his order, announcement of order today, in regards to those essential businesses. Do employees need to have something from their employer on letterhead that indicates that they're from or part of an essential?
No, they do not.
They do not?
No, they do not.
And as far as enforceability, there is no enforceability at this current time, correct?
As it relates to...
The stay-at-home order. So if there's somebody who is deemed a nonessential business, who is still going to work, there is no enforcement for that?
A nonessential business will not be able to remain open.
Okay.
What would the fine or punishment be?
Well, if they were charged with that, it'd be a $250 fine for occurrence and/or 30 days in jail.
And is that going to be enforced, driving around the city looking for businesses that are not essential tomorrow?
What we're going to be doing is very simply similar to what we did during the last closures. We're going to be identifying businesses out there, and if they're open, we're going to be friendly, we're going to be telling them, look, here's the governor's order, you're not able to be open, and we want you to know that you're not able to be open. And we're going to encourage them strongly to just participate with everybody else in making sure that they're, that they're following the governor's order. And then we're going to give them an opportunity to comply. If we find that they're open to begin, we're going to go give them another warning, say, hey, you can't be open. The second time around, it's our intention to refer them to charges with an advice that they can be arrested after that. There are many businesses that are open. This is not, this is not a shutting down business. This is a, there's a lot of businesses that are going to remain open for this. There's so many exceptions to the governor's order, there's a, boat stores are open, there are a lot of exceptions out there. I don't foresee there being, I can't imagine any enforcement effort out there associated with this because there are so many exceptions out there. And those businesses that know that they have to close, many of them are probably already closing. I know that in instances of Kohl's, the National Department Stores, they're closing, they're doing it on their own accord. There are some businesses in the city that they won't fall within the exception, and I'm confident that we're going to have a conversation with them, and they're going to agree with us, and they're going to follow the order.
And in regards to interstate travel, that was, I got probably five messages asking about interstate travel.
Well, the governor has indicated it's okay to go to state parks.
Yes.
The governor's indicated...
That's intra, but inter, so say...
There is no, there's no border rules, there's no, you can't leave the state of Wisconsin, there's nothing in the order that says that you can't go to another place. It's strongly encouraged to stay at home. The governor's indicated, please go walk your dog, go visit a park, go take a walk, go get outside, just ensure you're participating in social distancing and protecting yourself.
Thank you.
And our parks are still open, they're just have been some playground equipment that...
Specifically within the order itself, playgrounds are closed, water parks are closed, those particular locations that are specific to parks that bring people together closely, those are what are generally closed within the order.
I can add a little bit to that. I, watch your step, we don't want to... I did talk to Mr. Maurer today because there were some questions about different, playgrounds are the first thing, and I personally witnessed one and shared that with Mr. Maurer. Some people are going to be angry, but the pickleball court nets aren't going up, just because by putting them up is almost encouraging them to do it, and that, those types of activities are being discouraged. We're not taking things down, but we're not putting them up either. For example, there's basketball hoops up with nets. We're not taking them down. It's very clear that they shouldn't be using them, but we don't have the police out on park patrol to grab 10-year-old kids who are playing in there. Their parents need to be part of that. But certainly if somebody sees something, they'll probably say something, but we are not actively doing that. We're expecting people to understand that, and quite honestly, that's what we've observed for the most part. I mean, people have, people have already started to do it. The way I look at it, and I was looking at the state of Illinois' order before ours came down, and it was like, well, it's really just ordering what we had been recommending all for the last week. So it's really just more, we want you to do this, and we're saying you can't do it, and our police department will be out there to educate, and if we get compliance with education, we're going to be okay.
Thank you both.
Councilmember Miller.
I just think it's important that we all understand people are scared, and we're sitting on a powder keg here, and sending city officials around, shutting people's businesses down is a very challenging situation. Nobody, nobody is going to greet that city official friendly, it's, there's not going to be a positive outcome. I just, I caution everybody with using our police departments to do these kinds of things aggressively, that's all.
Yeah, I got just a couple more things that we've talked about, the, we opened up a joint information center, that's been instrumental in pressing out that messaging about the voting. That also gives out updates, you know, we are very concerned about making sure that we keep our internal and external customers, you know, that being the community and our employees, well-informed. You know, so you'll see, should be seeing several times a day, if not at least daily, information and updates that come out. So please monitor social media, you know, whether that's the fire department, the police department, the parks department, you know, we're pushing out that messaging on our website, there is updates in the big red button at the banner at the top of the website, COVID-19 information. You can go there for updated information. Oshkosh Media is pressing out information, you know, so we're making sure that we get that information out there because as Councilmember Miller said, you know, people are scared, they're concerned, they want information, that we're doing our best to make sure that we're getting that out to the people that are concerned. That relative to, you know, what we're working on in the Emergency Operations Center, you know, we continue to contingency plan, you know, the city manager Roloff indicated, you know, we're looking at not only city of Oshkosh, but countywide and even multi-county-wide, what does it look like for us if this does get worse, as, you know, some people are concerned about. That I know there is a lot of concern about the potential, and I stress the word potential, of UW Oshkosh being used for quarantine people, you know, for mass care, you know, things like that. I think it's important to note that the university of... And I think it's important to to note that the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh is a state asset, you know, and is controlled by the state. Right now, they have indicated to all of the University of Wisconsin campuses that they want them to reserve their, all of their facilities for potential their use, that that would be a worst-case scenario, that we would have to open up those regional sites to house people that are quarantined or in need of more medical care. We're, we're not anywhere near that yet, you know, it's just the contingency planning, but ultimately, the the city of Oshkosh or Winnebago County is going to have very little say relative to that, it's a state asset and controlled by the state. So I know there's been some concerns in the community, secondary to that. As I said, we're working on response plans, making sure that we have, you know, contingency plans for an increase in call volume, which we are not seeing, we're seeing call volume stay the same or even a little bit lower still. But if we do have an increase in call volume or a decrease in workforce, what does that look like for us to continue to to provide emergency response? We are closely tracking personal protective equipment, the quantities that are available to us, you know, still pursuing additional resources to make sure that we do have that personal protective equipment to to protect our employees or people that may be in contact with potential patients. You know, and on that, that same note, I'd like to call attention to the Oshkosh Area United Way took the initiative to put together a community drive to collect PPE and hand sanitizer and things like that, that that occurred this afternoon, you know, certainly appreciate them organizing that to to make sure that we can increase our stock, and very much appreciate the community turning out for that, you know, and supporting that. And on that same note, that I really couldn't be more proud, you know, I couldn't be more proud of our community, that these are trying and stressful times, you know, and the city manager Roloff indicated, we're seeing the the community respond the way we would hope, you know, that they're following those directives, they're trying to flatten the curve, they're trying to protect themselves and their family to to make sure this doesn't get worse, you know, and our community has turned out to support us with the PPE drives, or we've had, you know, people come to us that, you know, they want to make hand sanitizer for us, you know, some industrial companies and things like that. It's been overwhelming how the community has pulled together, and that's really what makes Oshkosh Oshkosh, in my estimation. You know, and part of that community is the smaller, our internal community of our employees, couldn't be more proud of them either, that, you know, over and over again, you know, whether it be the president or the governor or the the city manager, they're identified as essential employees, you know, and part of critical infrastructure. And they have stepped up to that challenge, you know, without hesitation of, we know we need to continue operations, we know that we need to be the the rock in the storm, you know, that that shows strength. So, you know, like I said, I could not be more proud of all of the city employees, you know, our elected officials in our community of coming together to to do what we need to do to to weather this emergency. That's all I have.
Well, I'd just like to thank all of those staff. While the doors may be closed to City Hall for things other than voting, there are many employees and staff still working many, many hours to keep things like basic services going.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, we appreciate that. There's one more item, it's related all to the COVID-19, unless there are any questions, I don't want to, you know, this is the public's opportunity, you're asking a lot of great questions, and, you know, while I would like to get home, just like everybody else, I also want to make sure that the public's informed. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them here, because I think having public answers to public questions is is more effective. If not, I want to move to economic development support for businesses during this emergency. We're not prepared to have any recommendations here tonight, that's why there was nothing specific on the agenda, but Mr. Davis and I would say Mr. White with Go EDC, Greater Oshkosh Economic Development, and Allen's staff and, you know, finance staff, we've been talking about just many different things. And Go EDC has had some discussions, they may have reached out to some council members about this, but in terms of directing some revolving loan fund monies to to get this, to get this done, and my only criticism of Jason was that it wasn't, it wasn't ambitious enough. After discussion with Mr. White, we're prepared to propose to council that we direct a quarter of a million dollars out of our revolving loan fund to go towards a revolving loan fund program for for small businesses, recognizing that cash flow is a super important issue. The number of businesses I've spoken with, you know, it just, it makes you cry when you think about the impact it's having on them, both from their business, but well, the small businesses, that is their livelihood, it's their, it's their job, that's their paycheck, and essentially, some of their paychecks are are literally being strangled out. Go EDC has some reserves, and they're prepared to put up $50,000 of their reserves to supplement the quarter of a million from the city, and we're turning it over to their revolving loan fund committee to take a look at how that would be administered, and we'll be coming back, because that will require some notice. That's why I think we're going to need to meet on April 14th, because there are things we need to do.
Could I just ask a clarifying question on that, then? So so that would help some of those businesses stay open, but for those who maybe, maybe they rushed to close the doors, you know, in reaction, is it also open to them if they want to try to open back up under limited capacities?
To the degree they can, I think the answer, the short answer is yes. It's not just for businesses that are remaining open, it's for some businesses that may be shuttered and, you know, as a result of the order, they, they are definitely ones that can't be open, and we want to help them as well, because they're still rent to pay and other expenses that they have, and it's those fixed expenses, you know, it's not pleasant, but they can lay off employees, those can be variable costs, but their fixed costs won't go away, and they'll never be able to get their employees back unless they can stay afloat during this whole thing. So we're recognizing that, we're, we're getting a lot of good suggestions from the business community about things that they think would work to help them. You know, I had one person talk about, it was a person runs a restaurant, 250 people are out of a job right now because of the the massive amount of impact they have on our community. Mr. Davis has another idea that we want to kind of pitch, again, we're just, we're looking for ideas.
Councilmember Miller.
Thanks, Mark, I'm kind of interrupting you, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to meet with you earlier today. The county reached out to me, both Sheriff Motts and and Mr. Harris had a, had a meeting, and they would be very interested in matching our $250,000 along with the fact that Go EDC would be administering this, so.
That's wonderful to hear.
Yeah, so they, they would like a little bit more details, but I'm sure that's up to Allen Yu to work on.
We're still working on the details.
I know, I know.
It's just like, and and this is, we're, I won't say we're making it up as we're going along, because we've run revolving loan funds before, but the urgency for for cash flow is so evident that we don't want to, we don't want to delay too much, that two weeks for between now and, and it's actually going to be three weeks, because we got a fifth Tuesday. We're going to need council actions. I'd like Allen to to talk a little bit about another idea he had, which I think is very creative, and appreciate his ingenuity in this, but it has to do with TIF funds.
Sorry, one second, Councilmember Allison Asby.
So I guess a question I have, just so that business owners know, is if we're involving the county and its Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corp., this money is not strictly reserved for businesses that are in Oshkosh, it could be then any business in Winnebago County, correct?
Yes, and we're going to use all our creative skills to figure out how to maximize those. Some are going to be geographically restricted, others aren't, so we want to make sure that if it's more restrictive, we, we don't use other non-restrictive funds there. Allen's going to talk about one that's going to be restrictive, and so if you want to hold off, Allen's got something that I'm very excited about and very proud that that our staff is thinking about these types of things to to help our businesses, Allen.
Please tell us some good news.
Yeah, I'm teasing you.
We've got existing TIF districts that have cash balances. We have a situation where we need funds available for these businesses. One idea we've had that we've run through up and down the the flagpole at this point is using TIF number 16, which if you recall is the 100 block, and I have a map that shows you a little bit right there, that's the TIF district for TIF number 16. It is within the power of the Joint Review Board to allow us to spend funds within a half-mile radius of that TIF district for loan programs for businesses. So we've started to assemble the material necessary to make that happen, we've solicited the Joint Review Board to meet as early as next week, so they could review this proposal, and they can approve it or deny it. Mr. Harris from the county is on that committee, so that'll be a very good complement to what we're talking about. The thing is that the funds would have to be geographically limited to that circle, so as Mr. Roloff was talking about, there's probably going to be two or three different types of funds, one would be from the circle, one would be from the revolving loan fund with city funds that would stay inside the city, Go EDC funds could be spent anywhere in their jurisdiction, and technically, Go EDC could also approve a project outside the city with their board approval, but getting board approval isn't the quickest thing at this point in time, so that's where we're starting off right now, is that we'll have the circle, we'll have city funds as well as Go EDC funds, so we think we can cover just about everybody with a different funding source.
And if you throw the county in.
Yep.
Then that's another overlay.
Well, and and I've, from also working with my cousin, she, she thinks there's a couple donors that would be interested in this, and I know the chamber's also interested in this, so I, I think we've got a magnificent group, and I, I can't thank city, city staff enough for getting ahead of this, I can't thank the county for enough for reaching out, the chamber, the, the, my cousin, Carleen, I mean, everybody's pitching in, you guys are just killing it, so please, 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 keep it up. This, this is unbelievable.
So does that include nonprofits or only for-profit businesses in that circle or beyond?
Well, that's a good question, I'm not sure that's a question, uh, thing we've actually talked about. Let me get back to you on that one, it's a, it's a work in progress.
Because I know we have a significant number of very hard-working nonprofits filling the gaps in that central dense area, so, all right, thanks.
Mr. Roloff, just, just one comment.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd be a little concerned to be spreading the wealth too far north, because Nina Minashe, Fox Crossing, all ties into the greater Chamber of Commerce for City Appleton and the surrounding area. I think we have to be somewhat geographically, the county money, no problem, as long as it's within Winnebago County, but if it's Oshkosh money, Chamber of Commerce dollars, I think it needs to be somewhat kept in the Greater Oshkosh area. We've had a lot of opposition over the years when we've tried to reach out to the north part of Winnebago County, and I think that's one of the reasons why Go EDC is advised as the southern Winnebago County.
Councilmember Mugraer went to make something, make a comment here.
If you don't mind, I think Councilmember Herman's points are are very well taken and and nearly spot on, and I also, I appreciate Councilmember Miller's enthusiasm on this, because I think this is just one of those things where it shows the strength that we've, we've accumulated. We've accumulated some strength in this community over the last five, 10 years, in terms of financial, financial, not necessarily reserves, but just the ability to try to withstand some of these, these emergencies that we're having. Go EDC is the, and I had this conversation with with Jason White from Go EDC today, they are the perfect entity to, you know, advise and try to run anything that that we're looking to possibly do here. They're already doing it with our capital catalyst fund, it'll be a very similar process as what, what they would potentially run through, and I think their track record of of being very, very good stewards of the taxpayer dollars over the last several years since their, since their, their founding, gives me a lot of support for, for any kind of program that they would be behind and be looking to run. So I think try, try not to get too far out ahead of those guys, let them figure out some details, this is, this is very early, let, let the professionals figure out some details and report back to us when, when they've got some, some time underneath them to, to really put something positive and and strong together for us. But I'm excited, I'm excited, I don't express it as much as Councilmember Miller over there, but I'm, I'm excited for the opportunity that that we would have to, to support businesses, and it's not just supporting the owners of these businesses, it's the workers, it's keeping these places open long-term, it's not just reopening the doors today, but making sure that they're still here in six, nine, and 12 months to be able to keep, you know, make Oshkosh a great place.
The best analogy I can use is, is, you know, this is, we're kind of in a desert right now, and we need to give, you know, the sips of water may keep them alive, and we're not talking about a ton of money, talking about just enough money just to keep them going, and that's, I think that's where we feel, that's our, that's our moral obligation.
Should be clear what they're talking about, it's not grants, to taxpayers at home, they're not giving money away. The, the, and Mr. Miller can talk more to this, but, you know, short-term loans, these are bridge loans, these are just to help people get through this time, they will bring the money back, but just short-term, you know, gap financing, just to help them keep the lights on just enough to keep going.
Well, for example, the funds that Allen's talking about, those funds, if they don't get used by the end of the TIF, they get redistributed, so that's why we need the county and the school district to be on board with us. What we've done with our funds at the end of a TIF district is put it into our revolving loan fund, so really, all we're doing is seeding that money earlier rather than later, and so we're still using it for its intended purpose, we're just, you know, front-loading it a little more than we did.
So Mr. Roloff, then, sorry to interrupt, so are you saying, though, that if, you know, if perhaps this school district felt like they really needed, excuse me, those funds, that to support what they're trying to do for the students, that, that that could be, you know, a barrier to this?
The school district, until they receive the funds, it's not in their jurisdiction, so we've closed, we've closed TIF districts earlier in order to, for example, Fund Lake Side School, that was part of us closing some of our, our districts. Other districts we left open longer to get some things done, when you think about everything we were able to do in the South Shore. So we work cooperatively with, with all of our partners who are part of our Joint Review Board, and they understand the situation we're in and what we're trying to accomplish, and that's why I think they were so receptive to this, so I feel confident we'll be able to do that. And Mayor, you promised you were going to ask me a question, like, it does, this doesn't...
Yes, the housing, so that typically, that, that funding that gets held at, over after the end is for affordable housing, this is not an either-or, correct?
Correct, they are two independent sources, we get an extra year to fund the affordable housing, and that does not go away with everything we're doing, so we'll still be able to support our affordable housing programs, which I thought was important to mention when the mayor asked me, I said, please ask me again, because I think it's important for everybody to know, we're not going to take away the affordable housing aspects of this. So we're excited, we're, you know, we'll be working on the details of it, but obviously, in order to assist the businesses, they need that drink of water right now, they don't need it in, in a month or six weeks, they're going to need it now to hold them over, and we hope and pray that it ends sooner, and so that it won't be as necessary for as long, but, you know, even what we're talking about, if we can do everything that we just talked about tonight, we're over a million dollars, which is wonderful, but we had a lot of businesses that need help, so that million dollars will, will dry up pretty quick, but I think we need to, we need to offer some of this support here and now, because the support we might get from other agencies, you know, that's not a guarantee, and it may, it may come later. We need, we want to take care of our folks now.
And depending on how long this lasts, we're also working on plans B and C for future months, in case that's.
We're not, we're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
Good.
This is all we got, this is what we got for you tonight.
This is excellent, guys, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, I just want to have just one moment here for our closing statement, we are at two and a half hours, typically, we would have a recess at two hours, but this was an exception this evening. I just want to thank all of our residents for staying home and cooperating, I appreciate all of the sacrifice for those who can't stay at home, who are working either in essential functions or frontline, and just encourage you to seek your information from credible sources, there are many, many sources right now, and as we mentioned earlier, the city is giving local updates on our webpage under COVID-19, the county health department as well, and the Department of COVID-19, the county health department as well, and the Department of Health Services at the state level, as well as the CDC. So be safe, be well. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.